Okay, I'll have to call the May 14th Green County Planning Commission to order like the welcome of the visitors. And I guess first to approve the minutes of April 9th meeting.
So move.
Right.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to approve. Review and consider approving a three lot subdivision on the Helen Robinson property for three lots totaling 14 for 30 acres located adjacent to Reagan Hollow Lane, United Civil District. Who's got that one?
The representative that I'm aware of is Jerry Murphy. He's the surveyor. Is anyone present for that survey plat? It's located on Reagan Hollow Lane for a survey of property. Staff has reviewed the survey. It does meet all the requirements. However, I've not received any signed copies of this survey plat. The staff are breaking in from there and final plat approval, subject to them bringing in the survey plats to the office with all signatures or we can recommend denial until they turn them in.
Why they're not turning them in?
That I don't know.
Did they know they were required to turn them in?
Yes.
I don't see how we can approve it. And I think we should deny. I'll look at them.
Okay, the motion denied. Do you hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor deny say aye.
Aye.
All opposed lock sign. Motion to deny. Paces. Review and consider approving the division of DeMichael and Louise, Luann Berry property for two lots totaling 2.47 acres located adjacent to Chalky Road in the 15th Civil District.
Representative for this one is Daniel Coffey at Asmat Engineering.
I think you've got the, I think you've got the plan.
Are they in the T-Deck office?
Probably indeed. Yeah, probably.
I apologize, I did not have time to grab those.
That's okay.
So, they are submitted. I have reviewed them. T-Deck is behind in the office. They have several subdivisions that's pending in their office with their signature. Daniel does have all his signatures. They do, they have been submitted. It's a two lot division coming out of Chalky Road, two lots. One has an existing septic system. The other property is vacant, which T-Deck is in the process of evaluating. So staff would recommend preliminary final plat approval, subject to signatures.
So move.
Got motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion for free carries. Review and consider approving the division of the Kaplan Camacho property for two lots totaling 4.495 acres located adjacent to Community Center Road and McDonald Road, United Civil District.
This one is a two lot subdivision. One of the lots has an existing home on it. We never could find the layout, so this one will probably end up being administrative. But when we submitted it, we didn't know if we was gonna find the layout or not. So, so it needed to be approved subject to signatures because I do not have those. And I know that soil work has been done. I tried to get with Kent this morning to make sure he did it on both lots, but haven't heard back from him.
And the representative that is speaking is Daniel Coffey at Asmat Engineering. He is correct. I can approve this one administrative if they do soil work on both lots, since he was unable to find the layout for the existing septic system on lot two. Staff would recommend preliminary and final plat approval, subject to all the signatures including T-Deck.
My jet motion.
Second.
All opposed second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed lock sign. Motion carries to approve. Consider request to rezone park located adjacent to 89 Setic Street, Blue Springs Parkway, Hack Park or 083, Hack Map 083, Park 017.01 from A1 United Culture District to M1 Industrial District for these purposes, for post trucking town. Promise.
Okay, we're gonna open up the meeting to the public. If there's anyone here for or against the rezoning, you're able to speak at the meeting. You have three minutes to tell the planning commission what your concerns are regarding the rezoning. So if anybody wants to speak, just raise your hand. This is on the rezoning for Blue Springs Parkway. I let the record show that no one's here to speak for or against the rezoning of property. We'll let Tim Tweed's staff present his findings.
If you, I'm not sure if even anyone's here to represent this. You're okay.
Me either? Oh, okay.
This is off of Blue Springs Parkway. Not the best site in the world as far as being, it's sort of below the road, which was a concern, was the ones entering the roadway with this. If you look at your information that is provided for you there, it gives you all the information pertaining to that property. We try to, especially M1, which you've got on below this particular property, you do have land there, used to be, I guess it's still in there, down there trucking, but it's quite a way up down the road in distance wise. This one does have some concerns because you've got residential use across the road from that, residential structure, it's not necessarily residential district with residential structure on it as far as those coming in and out of the roadway on that particular site. So if you look over your information, it gives you the pros and cons of it. If you got any questions, I'll answer those as well.
Is it right on Blue Springs Parkway?
No, it's actually, it's on the Blue Springs Hill. Big Ridge going down the hillway on it.
I don't think it's got any kind of things.
I'm sorry?
On the side.
They don't have anything to do with this. They've got, theirs jumps in and out down through, it stops actually back up to the top of the hill on their, at the end of it. Is the other one who represents this? Sorry? The one who represents this? The other one that you're showing?
Okay.
You're Craig Graves, correct?
Just me.
Okay, is the owner here as well? Is he the owner? No?
No.
Okay. So you're just the only representative here. Okay. Let the record show that Craig Graves is present. He's the applicant for the rezoning at Blue Springs Parkway.
You're not bothering yet Craig, you're in.
That's correct.
It's been involved.
Steve, the B is the rezoning.
And Robert Turner is the property owner for the record.
How steep? Team, how steep is the grade going up?
It's got a, it's got a pretty good offset down in there. And that's what's, one of the concerns with it, but I know they put Phil in, but the location of it was, was a little bit different. And I know Lynn had worked on this as well. She might have some input, she wants to put into it as far as this, but it's, when you come straight out of this site, you're straight in front of the other, or pretty much in front of the other structures, living or residential structures on the other side of it.
What'd you say? Close to land there, you said?
It was back up the roadway coming down, but yeah, there's an offset.
On the right going down?
It's on the left going down.
Left going down.
It just takes it through, before the three lane stops.
Yes.
So basically it joins, it joins land there right or?
No.
No.
Land there going down. You're actually.
Before you go around the curve, man.
Yeah. And actually you do through this area right here, still has a braid going up that hill.
Yeah, so like a python line going up.
So it, the land there property stuck over 3,000 feet to the west.
Yeah.
So you go Craig, they're from, make the trucks wherever they're in that, Blue Springs, do you think?
I think the location as far as area and that, which we're telling us totally up to the planning commission on what to do, it did concern with the approach and where this was, even though again, you've got the structure, the size of that property as well. But the location really was, was a concern to us with it being M1 particular location. It may have the requirements as far as the lot size and zoning has put in place for you.
Does the approach to the road, the only concern you've got?
That and really the location around those.
Well, residence.
The residence.
Is that just up the hill from Iron Bridge?
It is on the hill. It goes off, and you get up around that curve, it sort of drops off over the land down there. Open field.
What would be your recommendation to make the approach as safe as possible if it was approved?
If it's approved, that's what T-Deck will regulate the, actually DS doing Blue Springs? Blue Springs?
Yeah.
So that would be your odds instead of T-Deck's, or T-Deck's, I'm sorry. So that would be your odds for the approach on coming into that. I guess where it just dropped off in that hole, so bad, plus some area with it, so that would be something I guess, I would probably think, see if they could work out if it was living there on that. We wouldn't have any jurisdiction on ourself on it as far as, is someone's required or is it not? Well, now they have to have the permitting and stuff for the highways going down, because they would probably have a permit, if you're going. Didn't used to, but it is now.
The, with the grade of the driveway going up to the road, depending on what that grade is, of course, is how fast the trucks can pull in and out. And so one of the concerns had been if the trucks were having to come up at an angle instead of there being enough field to level it up, that it would take too long for the trucks to be getting in and out of the roadway. So at that point, site distance becomes a concern. That's based upon the state of the road and the speed of the vehicles that would be leading it. And doing the site distance study is beyond what the staff is able to do. So it really, that had been a big concern, and that will depend on how much field is going to get on that property.
It's not likely that they'd be heading back toward the green roads they left out here, that they'd be going toward the interstate.
That's likely.
Is it?
I lay at the land. There's always a possibility.
Does it provide for a almost parallel entrance to the roadway or would have to be perpendicular?
They could, I mean, with the way that lot is, they could build it and eventually come straight out on the roadway, but it would take, like I said, it's gonna take a lot of, lot of work to do.
So it's a pretty deep hole.
And on the permit, you have to have a flat entrance on our permit, you have to have a flat entrance.
It's gonna require a lot of field.
And that's gonna be commercial, so it'll be, it'll be bigger than just the regular, even our residential sites, eight inches of land, but commercial.
So we're just gonna approve it for M1 if we do, and then maybe at the end we'll cut you out?
Then the highway department will look into the entrance and stuff, because they'll have to get an entrance permit.
Based on what you've said, it sounds kind of negative right now. Do they do anything for site preparation?
You know, he bought it, he, he ain't gonna buy it if he get it done. If I, I don't wanna speak out of term, but that's the way I took it, anyway.
That sounds like it might be a free eight, my safety thing. I'll take it on safety. Any motion as I deny it all, Mr.?
And you're making your motion to deny based on?
The law.
What are you making your recommendation, recommendation to deny? What are you basing them on?
Safety.
Anything in the memo?
See. I'm just one vote, if you guys want to.
I see that safety is a concern. That's one of our options that we have on recommendations and all. I would request the planning commission to include items two through five in the motion before it's second.
I know he probably doesn't wanna build an access before he buys it or whatever, but it looks to me like something that's gonna have to be done to make it safe to get in and out. You can't just jump off in a hole. So, I don't, I'll go along with Rayman, I'll second.
Are you making a second to include all of items one through five and option B in the memo?
So we got the motion, a second to deny. Correct. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed lock sign. Motion carries to deny.
Now, this is a recommendation from the planning commission. It still goes to the county commission for approval, if ever to approve or to deny. So you've got one more meeting to get to four.
Okay.
Okay, consider request to rezone 4185, Hack Creek Road, Hack Park Road, Map 040, Park 03401, for A1 United Culture District to B1, neighborhood business district to make operations of the commercial kennel.
We'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone present to speak in regards to the rezoning for or against? If you do, okay. You're the property owner?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this rezoning? It's like I did, I got Craig Graves. If you would like to go ahead and speak to the planning commission, you may. You have three minutes if you would like to say anything before staff.
Yeah, our intent is to put in six kennel spaces. My wife, she's a certified dog trainer, certified service dog trainer. The intentions would be for kenneling for the general public and also offering boarding and training options for basic and advanced obedience type of training.
And just for the record, your name is Timothy Anderson, correct?
Yeah.
This one, they built a new structure on this one. We didn't get to do the inspections on this one like we should have, which it wasn't necessarily, there wasn't anything mentioned when we came through our office as far as being used as a kennel. This came up afterwards, and they, whether it was inadvertently, and I assume that it was on that.
I, I even filled out the application at the front desk and asked for help, and I did at that point say, you know, what are the intentions for use for? The instruction I had gotten at that point was to mark it out for the garage and that's it.
And I'm not one to dispute any of this wording on that. I do know that the office tries very hard, they're very aware of the kennel requirements as far as those being required to go to the B-zone. The only way that they can actually operate this kennel, we can't give them a certificate of occupancy, we can do a certificate of completion occupancy letter because of no inspections have been done on it, and they haven't been anything requested on it, which is a cross kennel responsibility to do that. But the, one of the things that happens for those is, and me and Roger had talked to C-Tas with this, in fact, it's been a long time back as far as the requirement needs to go to a business district instead of being allowed in the A1. This is gonna be smaller than what most you would see in a kennel with it being smaller use on it. Gives you the two options here as far as the recommendation, the three options here as far as approval, and then also you've got the other options as far as denial on it. Hack Creek Road's not a, not a very bad road in the sense it's a decent road. Their only corner, they've had, one of the issues we ran into, just so we go into a little bit more detail, this one, the issue we ran into was where this building is located, for an accessory structure is good. And a B1 structure will be good. But in the A1, for it to be used in any type of business, the setbacks, you couldn't get the, the distance between the residents and the building. So the only way that they can actually make this work is to rezone the whole property towards a mixed use with this, and it has to go to the B-zone to be able to meet the setback requirements. A1, even if, even if the agricultural, or even if the all kennels allowed in A1, it wouldn't need the setback requirements, they'd be required to have the question variance on it. So this is really the only choice that we have, or they have really, is to approach this with the, you all will see if it's a possibility, we get it rezoned for that area.
How close is this structure to the other houses around it?
Their, their property line joins a structure to the right. The road, Tompkins Road out there separates it from any other structures on the left. Their house is, is right against the structure, so that would, that would be the one that would be the closest proximity is their particular dwelling.
The next closest house is probably 75 yards.
And there, the other structures in behind it, on the right side, pathways, that could be in there.
If it's rezoned, if this seems as to operate, what's that opened up to?
They opened it up to a few uses on it. The B1's not as, and I'll give you a few of those if you wanna.
I'll give you a couple of uses in that.
The B1, you can, which of course, it always pyramids back any use in R1, which is residential model, but you have barber shops, beauty shops, gift shops, prayer shops, hardware stores, laundry, dry cleaning, which grocery stores, you still have a kennel store in the A1 zone. Of course, gasoline service stations, they couldn't in that particular building, or they're, they're close proximity of a house and so forth, there's some other issues that would have to go into play on some of these, but automobile sales, you can, and the hills have quite a bit. The only other one that, the only other zone that gets more restrictive is, or more uses is really the B2. B3 allows for all, it's in the B1 and B2, but doesn't list a lot of it. This one has quite a bit of uses in it.
There's no other B2s in this area, are there?
B1?
That'll be one, I'm already doing. I answered you.
I said it.
I'll be there. And you do have the recommendations for and against it out there, isn't it? Of course, you already have it included, gives you what we search for.
So the closest house is kind of close?
He gave the distance, we didn't do the distance measurement.
Yeah, I would ask maybe.
If I may, I'll stand up here and show you. Closer, so you can see not so aggressive, but here's his structure besides. I have discussed it. And that's what we have, we have the one on truck.
The gent, the new, the, the, the building right there, they're out there later. On it, it's close to six years.
So I'm, I'm curious, are there never units to be available for use all the time on there?
There would be.
There isn't any?
Yes, well, they're, 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 they're expanded, that's, that's not for use, it could be expanded. That's what they're planning on doing at this point in time, but it could be expanded, there's nothing would prevent it from being larger, that way.
And then that would still be a structure for the label to contango on and on.
It wouldn't go away. What, the, the reason, the rezoning is hard and difficult sometimes is because, you know, when you, your intent is for it to never change, even if it's something very, very low and drastic and everything else, but if, if a person decides to use anything within that B1 or R2, it will make, you know, you're not, normally you don't have a, bad things going down with it as much as you are going up, but everything in that B1 can, can go at that side right there pretty much, as long as they've moved the setbacks. They also have the option of coming and requesting a variance of the borders on their field if something happens once that's rezoned, which you have lesser setbacks for the business district than you do, in this case, than you do with the, the A1 zone. A1 has a stronger setback, just one way out there.
You had no problem with them?
We had an eye on them. It's always, we try to, you know, group the business, get as close as we can, and sometimes it's not. It's more of you, you know, than me.
I think if we open it up to business here in this part of the county, people might think that this is, it's worn anywhere in the, surrounding area, or anywhere in the county for that matter. So, I don't think it's fair to the residents of surrounding this to not get, to have that use to be expanded over time. It can be expanded for the whole property.
I would agree with that. I think it should be denied, given the negative impact on the presidential.
Because the motion denied, you're second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Close lock sign. Motion carries to deny.
So for the record, your, your denial is based on, on number three of the memo?
Open area of the business, use could expand, increase in negative impact.
Remember, I'm.
I have no numbers on that.
Yeah, that's, that's denied.
So I don't think it's fair to the residents of surrounding this to not get, to have that use to be expanded over time. It can be expanded for the whole property.
I would agree with that. I think it should be denied, given negative impact on the presidential area.
You got a motion to deny or second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor to deny, say aye. Hold both lock signs. Both pairs denied.
Except for the record, your, your denial is based on, on number three of the memo. Opened area of the business use could expand, increasing negative impact.
Remember, I'm.
I have no numbers on that.
Actually, Amy?
Yes?
Prepare a grant right now. Word comes out, like the current, they have a negative areas, particularly in the county.
175.
So that's.
That's one of the bases for that use.
Yes. Goes existing transportation out.
Now, the ones that love it are actually more recommended, so what you said about a potential negative impact on the presidential area, that's, that's.
If you got a motion, second to deny, all in favor say aye. Hold both lock signs. Motion denied, period. Consider proposed amendments to Green County zoning resolution to reduce the minimum lot size for lot service by sanitary sewer.
Just for the record, we're going to let the property owner know that this is just a recommendation that goes before the green county commission. No good before them next time.
I would suggest it.
You're welcome.
What kind of lots are we changing here?
What is the proposed lot size of the, the regulations toward the county requiring a lot size of the capex? And what is being proposed is to decrease the lot size in this particular instance to 15,000 square feet. The proposal came about at this time because of their request, but it's something that staff has looked at and considered for quite a while. This property is, I mean basically it's right across the street from county real property. 15,000 square feet is the minimum lot size required for their most restricted district. They have lots in the area that I think are zoned to R2, which has maybe like 7,500 square foot requirement. As in the memo, the principal use for requiring a capex or lot size deals with the septic fields. And if they have sanitary sewer, then there's no need for that extra area. So as I said, the timing is because of the request, but staff has felt like that this was something appropriate to look at doing as long as they have sanitary sewer and as long as each of those lots are required to tack into those sewer lots. There's a question about whether or not it's a financial benefit to the property owner because they're able to go with a smaller lot size, which means they get more lots, which would increase their revenue, but then of course they have to pay the tap on fees and have to install the, I guess property owners pay the tap on fees. So from staff's standpoint, the expense or the financial benefit to the developer wasn't really what we were looking at. It's just simply a question of, this particular request is in keeping with the entire area. It joins the city property. I can't, apparently I've been out of the mainstream that Green County admits property outside the city to tap on.
If it runs through the property.
Somebody's, something's going to be freezing over, it was, I mean, I mean, I fought in Grebel for 10 years for that, so I'm sorry.
Or did this come about to get it on the agenda?
Well, then it's property that's in, since Grebel no longer has a planning region, is this why it's coming before us?
Yes.
So subdivision plan comes before us. So it will be on the agenda simply for subdivision plan purely. The request to rezone, request to change the zoning resolution at this time came about as a resolution. But as I said, it's something that staff has thought needed to be looked at. There was several months ago, a proposal for development that was going to be right near a lot sign, and a lot sign would have provided sanitary sewer that they were doing with. So they would basically be clustering their uses and still with maintaining open space, but the, it was something that I thought would be, you know, a good development for that area. But because of the way the regulations were written, the planning commission opted not to agree to the smaller, in essence, smaller lot sizes, even though it would be having a sewer. So it's a request for that plan to improve, so that zoning resolution would have to be changed.
So in other words, if the developer comes in, he's got 30 acres, whatever, he tells something about, and if you could crush them all together, you might cook your cover out of them, you gain one more house, I don't know, subdivision, everybody's cramped and stashed, is that right?
If it's on sewer, but the, the term cramped in style, like I said, from, from the city viewpoint, municipal's viewpoint, the lot size they're looking at is actually larger than a lot of the lots are in this area. And it's not unusual for municipalities, including Grebel, to have a 5,000 square foot lot size for like 3, half to 3. So 15,000 square feet is, let's see, half acres, like 21,000 square feet, so it's about 6,000 square feet less than what you see traditionally in the county. But where this joins the town, it's actually a larger lot size than what is in essence across the street. It all has to do with, with the location and it being, if not appropriate for the area. If you feel like that this is something that is flat out, should not be considered, that it's in the county, it needs to be half acre, then definitely recommend that it not be changed. If you feel like when sewer is available, which of course is going to be adjacent to the municipalities, then, you know, make the recommendation that be changed, knowing that if it is changed, any property where the situation is that they have a sewer could go in with a smaller lot size, depending on what minimum lot size y'all set was, was appropriate.
Ain't got all kinds of soil we can get. Some are purple, some are purple. I witnessed that firsthand, that's my next move. I don't see a need to change it. Yep. I don't want to have sanitary sewer anywhere expanding. And the term sanitary sewer, if it's very sanitary, rather we split apart the picnic tables with viewing and the pipe. I mean, that's just the one after a full lot of humor out there. I've been to this before. So I, I don't know if you need a, for a little more discussion, I'll afford a little trigger, huh?
Well, I don't like to have different.
Speak up.
Different set of rules for, or do you, I think you don't say the science always, yeah. And if you're opening yourself up for some liabilities, it might be. So I'm, I mean, I just, let's leave.
What's our dollars for attorney, attorney with Kerry Rector? I know that a lot of times, well, for something like it, real estate, even something like it, I'll be in the state, but Green County is a large county and you drive around Green County, the planning commission and the county commissions made a lot of great recommendations. I think one of the best recommendations is starting to require 50-foot roof frontage and half acre lot. Everybody's got a opinion, that's my personal opinion, wow. That's my attorney, that's just my personal opinion. I haven't had a chance to go up and look at it. You know, some farms, yeah. Just smile.
If the planning commission would allow it, the engineer that's coming up next on the agenda for number eight, he would like to speak regarding the resolution that we're speaking of right now.
Can I ask a question real quick? Are y'all making a recommendation on changing the zoning? So it's coming this, this one way or another?
Daniel Coffey, from Massa.
Yeah, I'm Daniel. 35 years ago, that was the size, it was in the regulations in Green County, 15,000 square feet, you could be on septic system. When it was changed to half acre, I think at that time, they changed it where you could have 15,000 square feet if sanitary sewer was available. Very few places in the county that sanitary sewer is available, but this happens to be one of the pieces that it runs across. Five acres of this property lays within the flood plain, so it's, it's not useful for development. The density that's going to be achieved on this is a maximum of 50 lots on this 38 acre mission. So it's not like they're trying to do miniscule lots, that they're basically going to be 100 by 150 lots. That was what the developer was just looking at. I, I gave them the, the suggestion, you know, I assume they could probably get this annexed into the city, but I think it's better to stay in the county. I think some of the front lots where you come off of the road will be on septic system. I think this will be a hybrid project. I've got a sketch that was presented later, it's got 17 lots up at the front of the property that will be half acre lots. The bottom section, due to a power line crossing the property and the location of the flood plain, if you try to do half acre lots, you'd get about 16 more. If you let them put 15,000 square foot lots down there, they can get 34 more. As high as infrastructure is, if you're taking A1 and turn it into housing, you need to get as many houses as is practical. You don't need to sew them up on top of each other. But that was, I guess why they're asking for this, because it used to be that way. And again, the little caveat in there, when sanitary sewer is available, you don't need all that extra land. You still need the valley, or need to meet setbacks, and if I have plenty of room, it seems excessive.
Honestly, Daniel, you could go to them 5,000 square feet.
But that's too.
But I mean, honestly, that's, in this property, if you ask the city to take maintenance, then it'd be by city rules. So that's, that's the right subject, and I was going to say, the city will take them, put on the property. And the annexation principle is now, and the only way a city can annex is property on the water.
And Daniel is correct by saying that this was in our regulations, I don't know how long ago that was, but it did, the zoning resolution did address when it was located on septic or whether or not sewer was available. It did have two different sized lots. Is there anybody else?
It does allow it in the second dwelling, even in the R zone, it's in the R zone, just not in A1. But it does allow, and I'll give you a scenario with this, says the first unit of a, have a half acre, a half acre, and then the second one, it can have up to 10,000 square feet of space for the second. But it, this is the part that person who's zoning, what it says, but in no case may the, may be less than the minimum standard outlined, and that's what stopped the deal with Daniel's, was the minimum was a half acre for the first unit, which are not doing duplexes. Doing duplexes, it would've been counted out on just a single unit.
That's what I asked, is there anybody else here that would like to address this issue before the planning commission?
It's one more thing. We done this flat thing, you know, the developer, real estate man, say, utility water to fail, and Joe goes out there and buys, and then he goes out there, he don't have a water line, it'd be a mile down the road, so he must pay for that. My opinion, the developer may advertise as sewer available, it ain't available yet, it's failed that curve, the city of Innes, maybe whatever it is.
It actually runs across this property, the sanitary sewer line does.
Yep.
In this particular case that he's speaking of, you're looking at it from the standpoint of all in Green County. Just not one particular site, make sure you understand that, or looking at it, whether the planning commission wants to amend the zoning resolution for property that abuts up next to municipality, whether or not you want to require a lot size to be a half an acre for septic and 15,000 square feet for sewer availability. So sewer would have to be available. That's the only case that this would, this would apply.
It's going to be available, it's going to be available. About five, Joe's lot. What's that? A three man. What your file looks like.
Three men covering.
Maybe we could put this on the table, give some more thought.
Well, I just wanted to say, or ask, this sewer line that's running from this property down on this, in the flood, near the flood plain, is that right?
Yes.
Is there a, is this property here?
We're not discussing that one yet, though. That, that's coming up next.
But the septic, the half.
Is correlated to? It is, but this is in a mimic just to the zoning resolution.
Okay.
Just to make sure, you know, whether or not we see the county as a whole, if this is available, whether or not the county wants to look into allowing sewer to let, lessen the lot size.
It's currently happening.
I, I wouldn't suggest that, no.
You don't want my opinion. I'm like, Jerry, you just, you start changing these things and you're going to get in with some mess, end of our hands, sooner or later. I believe the benefits will be well enough.
You make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
To deny?
House Speaker.
Got motion, second, discussion? All in favor say aye to the deny. Hold both lock signs. Motion denied passes. Consider green concept approval?
So this is, this does not go before, this is something that we were studying. It doesn't go before the county commission. Yeah. So it, it's staying here unless you all want to bring it back up.
Okay, consider green concept approval, the proposed single family subdivision located adjacent to Wallman Road, setback 110 partial, 068 00 with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet.
This is Daniel Coffey. This is kind of where the lot size of 15,000 square feet has came up again with staff. He does have a layout that this one presents to the planning commission. It will change now for concept. If this will give an idea to the planning commission of what a proposed subdivision would look like if you had sanitary sewer available and on septic.
And as I said, looking at this drawing, lots 1 through 17 are all over half acre. Some, about 20% of the other lots are even over half an acre. But you can see looking at the flood plain and the way this power line's located, if you try to make these lots half acre lots, you're going to lose, which means you're going to shorten up your road, and it's just not.
Motion denied passes. Consider agreeing concept approval?
So this is, this does not go before, this is something that we were studying. It doesn't go before the county commission. Yeah. So it's staying here unless you all want to bring it back up.
Okay, consider agreeing concept approval to propose single family subdivision located adjacent to Wallman Road, tax back one ten partial, oh sixty-eight zero zero, with a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet.
This is Daniel Coffey. This is kind of where the lot size of fifteen thousand square feet has came up again with staff. He does have a layout that this will present to the planning commission. It will change now for concept. If this will give an idea to the planning commission of what a proposed subdivision would look like if you had sanitary sewer available and on septic.
And as I said, simply this drawing, lots one through seventeen are all over a half an acre. Some, about twenty percent of the other lots are even over a half an acre. But you can see, looking at the floodplain and the way this power line is located, if you try to make these lots half acre lots, you're going to lose, which means you're going to shorten up your road. And it's just not, it's wasting land, basically.
And which lots would have sewer?
Eighteen through fifty-one.
Eighteen through fifty-one.
Because existing sanitary sewer is along Richland Creek. Now, these lots down along the lower part could be made larger and extend out into the floodplain. It's damn happy. And we had a larger type of recreation area up here at the front where the existing pond and we're going to do some amenities that way. And also, we're stubbing out a couple of future streets where they could access the other properties. They used to be pretty commonplace.
Yeah.
The county usually doesn't require it, but it's better than having a lot of dead ends and cul-de-sacs. Plus, it just wouldn't be reasonable to try to build a bridge across Richland Creek to connect the actual highway. And I don't think it might in the world wants that anyway, turn that into a through street. But that was what the process was. I just had recommended to the folks to see, since it used to be in the regulations, thought it was perhaps an oversight is that it got taken out. But apparently, it was not.
So with the planning commission's. So the planning, so wishes to keep the regulations to a half an acre, the planning commission would have to recommend denial of this concept plan. And he would have to go back and redraw all the lots to a half an acre size.
I'll make a motion that we just send back and re-raise her out.
I'll say it.
So we're done, we're denied, right?
Yes.
Okay. Got most of the second in the schedule? All favor say aye?
Aye.
All toes locked signs? Most of the first is denied.
Thank you.
The senior proposal revise the Green County zoning resolution to add regulations concerning Airbnb.
This is the proposal that the planning commission discussed last month with the changes that had been suggested, which basically dealt with saying that providing would be adequate. And took out, I think it was a requirement for buffers adjacent to the residential property.
I know in our last meeting, Glenn Lillian, she's not present here today. Has she got a copy of this? Have you talked to her?
Haven't talked to her specifically about this and just looked at it.
I know that Lynn has went through and made all the changes that the planning commission requested at the last planning commission meeting. If you're not ready to vote on it this month, we can table it to the following month and give you more time to study it. Or if you're okay to go ahead and pass it through, we can have it sent to the county commission at next month's meeting.
TM? Is there people say community report for Airbnb?
We never really get notified, very rarely we get notified with it. And there have been, there have been some safety concerns on area once we find them because it's put in some areas that they really probably shouldn't. But it's rare that we get any notification at all with it. Right now, we're just requiring.
I think Airbnb was a main issue, but it was.
The terminology that was added in was that sufficient space for overnight guests should be provided.
Lynn, I thought Airbnb was a trade name. Is that what we need to find this whole bit of?
No, I mean, that's definitely a legal.
I think the generic name is short term rental.
Yeah, I think it needs to change. Everybody do their other size. It's like, I got the whole block waiting. I ain't under that. That's why I call it bushel, bushel.
So we need to just think that you'll change it back?
You can maybe change it here. I mean, if you're satisfied with the rest of the property.
I think you played out pretty well. Maybe it's a little bit of that air.
Airbending.
Being big, it doesn't matter. Obviously, it's right here. I'm sure it's all. Trademark. These are all being kind of long.
And it wasn't, it wasn't that the county was trying to. That's, that's, that's the thing going right now. It's not, you're seeing it all over. It's just that they was, they asked a question as far as what they had to do with it. If you were aware of it, you would have to, because they normally are making some type of changes. They would be required to have permitting, but it's just being aware of it. You don't need to know it's a fact.
Maybe we have a green capital that's found so far.
There is loads of them. There's over two hundred, I think.
I would have thought they were identified.
Yeah.
That's a low hanging fruit, Gary. Yeah, it is. I mean, I know there's a few, I know where a few is at, but I didn't, I would have thought that many.
You're actually surprised to see what it was.
What was it? And it'll be more and more.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this resolution? So raise your hand.
I would add comment, I guess.
Okay, if you could just say your name.
My name is Tony Gibson. I mean, Airbnbs are a huge thing up in North Carolina. And this is, I mean, it sounds like, I don't know what the rule is that was amended last month at the commission. But, but short term rental is a very broad definition as well. So you guys can look in the prospecting finding what is short term rental. I see the original issue is what is an Airbnb? There's the ROV, there's a bunch of online places to put your house or your apartment or your cottage or bus out on your property and rent it. And so, but what is the definition of short term rental? The Airbnb is a specific thing that was originally asked. And short term rental is a broader definition of like, is that a fifteen day stay in your basement? And that you just word of mouth do something? So that might open up to defining what is short term rental is a larger question for the county. But there's a lot of that, and a lot of people are making money by doing these Airbnbs out of county. And it's a big boom for bringing people into this county. So notifying that and safety, I think, is a huge issue. I mean, people are literally putting people on a bus on the side of the mountain. And so, how many people, how can you park there and things? But what is the definition of short term rental? Rental is a question as it sits.
Why do you think the definition that's in there for Airbnb, we think that's adequate?
I mean, you could actually leave that point, short term rental. I mean, is that fourteen days max? Would you consider fourteen days short term rental? Thirty days? I'd put it, in my opinion, just point, I'd say thirty days.
I would say thirty, just because it's, instead of fourteen, it's like thirty.
Yeah. That's why that's only change. I think that generally makes a good point, but I was. You could ask fifteen days, what's short term rental? About fifteen minutes.
So that's the three days.
So we're putting thirty days, Lynn? We're going to, like, rent a house?
No, 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 no. I suggest fourteen.
I mean, the short term rental.
Short term means fifteen days. But if you add it, say, it's thirty days.
It's thirty days, you're right. It's actually a good number.
So don't let me introduce to that.
I make a motion to accept for do this resolution on the changes from Airbnb to short term rental and the limit for the, to define short term rental for thirty days. That covers my question.
Got most of your second?
Second.
Each discussion? All first say aye?
Aye.
All toes locked signs? Most of the first is amended.
Yeah, I wish this could go to county commission next month. Right.
Okay, we review and consider approved final site plan approval of the president. View RV ranch to be located on tax back one fifty, partial oh two three one three, located adjacent to Willsey College Road in the sixth district.
I've got the actual site plan here at the commission.
We're going to open a discussion first to the public to speak regarding Willsey College Road. We know that there's a lot of people here. We're going to ask to try to limit to seven people to speak. If the commission wants to hear more, they'll have to determine whether or not to allow additional people. But you can speak up to three minutes. And if you just raise your hand, you know, to let your committee hear your thoughts and concerns about the Willsey College Road project, they'll be happy to listen.
So is that seven on each side?
Yes, seven, seven people on each side. Four against. So who would like to speak first?
I would.
And just, just say your name.
My name is Brian Bradley. And I've heard a couple of you all mentioned some things about safety in here today, and that's my number one priority. I make a living out here on these, these roads, and this road is sixteen foot wide. I've got an eleven and a half foot combine that I drove up and down this road for years. Now, when I need a ten foot RV on this road, and there's not a garb rail on either side of it, I'm getting on somebody's personal property and I'm falling off in a two hundred foot hollow here. Only two options we got. I take a bailer up and down this road. It's over eight foot wide. Again, the average camper, this is off the internet, of course, is eight and a half feet. That's a hundred and three inches plus six inches wide for apparatuses, side view mirrors are tracked at on it, et cetera. The average fifth wheel is between eight and ten foot wide. So one of us is going to have to give. There's nowhere to give. And you know, we're talking about safety. I would recommend that you drive this road before you approve this because it's, you're going to cause an accident. That's all there is to it. Line of sight distance from here to that door, then there's a hairpin curb to the left, then there's a hairpin curb to the right. Go the other end of the road, it's the same way. There's nowhere on this road, on either side of the road. There's a drop off on this side, there's a drop off on this side. Doesn't matter where on the road. Somebody's going to be off in a ditch. There's going to be an accident, there's going to be a piece of equipment torn up. I for one don't want any of my equipment torn up, tractor, bailer, combine, none of the above. What, what really struck me about it is the, the proposed resort has interior roads of twenty-four foots, and that's considered safer two-way traffic. Why is a sixteen foot feeder road considered safe on the same token? At what point is a road egregious enough to say no? Twelve foot, ten foot? At what point do we look at this and say, okay, this is going to cause something, we need to stop it? Again, we're going to go back to sight distance, the curves of the road, even bigger than the road size, which is significant. It, you've got hairpin turns. I mean, if you've got a ten foot RV coming around this curve, and you've got Bill over here coming up the road with his bailer to go, you know, go get his hay, there's nowhere to go. You're not going to be able to back up either way because you've got a curve this way, you've got a curve this way. Completely unfeasible. Another thing I would want to do, regulations are developed for public safety. But when the regulations do not specify a potential safety concern, if you have a conflict, the most stringent rules must apply. Then we have a regulation conflict. According to current regulations, home daycare facilities must be off of collector or feeder roads because of the traffic that is brought into the area. RV parks are even bigger with more guests, forty spots and cabins in this case. Yet there is no restriction, there is a regulation conflict compounded by inadequate road size and poor sight distance due to road currents. Thank you.
You Bill?
I'd like to speak, Glenn Marklin, owner, owner of my wife's own personal review of your ranch. I'd like to get together with you and measure the road because we measured multiple spots, road is nineteen point five. I'd like to get together with you with a tape measure, and you should underwear at sixteen feet.
Absolutely.
Within the last two weeks, we've had multiple tandem axle dump trucks going in and out of our personal residence, hauling dirt, grain, gravel in, they've met out on the road, they've had chats and stuff, side by side. They pass each other all day long. How many phone calls to nine one one where there about an accident? We know, no pause. We've had tractors going up and down the road, we've had cars pass each other, passing. There's RVs that go up and down a road. I mean, one person that's very opposed to us, she lives on the road in her RV, but it's okay. You know, they live on the road with an RV. Just a question, what farm do you live on Willsey College Road? And why would you be?
We live.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. But you know, that was my two things, you know, we've measured the road, it's nineteen and a half feet wide. We've had multiple trucks up and down that road, no accidents.
I think sixteen feet might come from this county redness. So I don't know that they went out and measured it because I was asked about that. I just said, this is what the county redness says.
Nineteen nine in front of our driveway and nineteen at the road for your turn.
Well, it's different widths all the way up and down the.
Sammy, don't be led by volume, you're going to talk to.
On the time, please.
Because you're recording. But if that's real, I'm telling everybody because it's being recorded, whoever speaks needs to be identified. Because these are lawyers, we want to know who's saying law. So no, I'm not trying to be hating anybody else. I'm just saying, one person's being at a time, and you need to get it, I understand.
Okay, you're finished?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to say anything else?
I'd like to speak, my name is Richard Graves. I'm here behalf of Stephanie Thompson. This, this site plan has to be denied. I sent an email to the commission earlier today talking about various deficiencies. I think the most glaring one, which they tried to correct some, was the parking. Regulations require that there be two parking spaces for RV site. It also requires that there be two parking spaces for each room in a hotel, plus an extra two for employees. Now, they've added, it looks like they've added a note that says each camp, each RV site can host an RV and two vehicles. And yet, unfortunately, I just saw this, I think their original application material submitted back in October, I can email this to Emmy Tweed, has a depiction of what the parking would look like. And it really only shows space for one RV and one vehicle in each parking space. So that, and also, the dimensions of the parking spaces for the RV pads are not described on here. The zoning ordinance requires a site plan to show the location and dimensions of the parking area. Some parking dimensions are shown, those are nine by twenty, that's a hundred and eighty square feet. The zoning ordinance requires parking spaces to be two hundred square feet. That by itself is an illegality. Now, I have no idea if there's going to be individual campfires for these RV sites. At a minimum, you should impose a condition on any approval that there cannot be individual campfires. If you have forty campfires going, that's a lot of smoke. That's a nuisance to the area. They shouldn't have to put up with that. If there is a nuisance, there should be a thousand foot setback, which they haven't done here. And dumping this amount of vehicles on this road with routine traffic in this area, that's a nuisance of people having to hold their breath every time they drive up and down the street. So for that reason, it should be denied. I would also state that I know the last commission meeting, my understanding is you recommended approval of a moratorium, which is before the county commission right now. That is a pending moratorium. This application, because it has five new cabins, which. This application, because it has five new cabins, which probably are not permitted use, that was rather than email, this application is a new application. So to the extent that that proposed moratorium had an exception for their original application, it doesn't apply to this one. And there's a doctrine in law called the pending ordinance doctrine. And that means when there is a development application filed, at the time that it is submitted for approval, there is a pending ordinance that would affect whether that application could be granted or not. The government is completely, I can completely appropriately pause that permit application until the ordinance passes or doesn't pass. So I think at a minimum, this application should be denied for a month, for the parking, for the ordinance, for the nuisance, and an infamous misuse of patents. I think my time's up.
Anybody else?
My name is Kate Carringer and I'm here on behalf of Jennifer Adamac and Glenn Markland. Just briefly wanted to discuss, back in October, when this preliminary site plan was approved, it was contingent on Mr. Tweed working with my clients to make this site plan up to code. It may be kind of not quite there yet on this vote, but we would ask to pass along to next month. But I would like to comment that the cabins are not going to be rented out for more than 30 days. They are permitted use. This is not a new application. This application has been pending since October of last year. My clients bought this property, understanding that RV park was a permitted use in this county. I've been told that there are five RP, RV parks in the area, some of them bigger than this proposed RV park. I'm not sure if they have fire pits or I don't know the minutia. But I would just ask that this not be considered a new application and that it be allowed to continue work with Mr. Tweed as the preliminary site plan was approved. I also believe TDEC approval is still pending, that goes back to that original October 10th meeting. So essentially today, this site plan probably just shouldn't have been brought up before you guys today. It needs, it needs work and I do appreciate Mr. Graves pointing some issues out to us. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Danielle. I'm Kathleen Carr and I live on 600 Willsey College Road, right across from the RV. I'm not a person who says, don't come into the county if you're from out of town, some people love that. I'm not. What I'm concerned about is public safety. You got a road, I got wetlands I want and a pond on the other side, nowhere to go, nowhere to go. Their driveway to come in is right here, my driveway is up here. They're going to go into my pond. I'm not pulling people under my pond, I'm not pulling people out of my land. People are going to get hurt. It's not if, it's when. Not only as they set the road, but the winds. I mean, it's going to happen. It just is. And when it happens, people can get sued, they're going to lose their livelihood, you guys are going to get sued, and I don't know what's going to happen to my pond if somebody goes in there, am I going to get sued? So it's public safety. I don't want anybody to get hurt. I don't want me to get hurt, I don't want my family to get hurt. And I think this really should be thought more thoroughly on whether this need to be held at all.
My name is Danielle Orlando and at this point, I'm really just mimicking what everybody else has said about public safety. And there's been a lot of discussion over private property rights and are we trying to be nosing up neighbors like just squashing them out? And I can assure you that out of anybody, I do not like my private property rights stuff done. But we have building inspections and we've got fire laws and we've got these things already put in place telling us what we can and cannot do in terms of public safety so we don't hurt ourselves and we don't kill our neighbors and we don't cause destruction to land and lives. And that's how we live in a community and we get along and we live relatively safely together. And so I have talked to some commissioners over Facebook and on the phone and I've been informed that the understanding of just how severe our wind is in the area was not fully like digested before the approval in October. And so the significance of the wind and how much wind we get is kind of new information. And so I just urge everybody to really consider what we're putting into an open field and what we're asking folks who might not know, come into and potentially be exposed to and be devastated by, all under the name of vacation tourism. So this is very real to us who live out there and batten down the hatches and understand it. And we chose to live here and we love living here and we do things to make sure that we stay as safe as possible, we attempt to keep our neighbors as safe as possible by trying to batten down the hatches. And sometimes things happen and fortunately, our neighbors who live around us are very understanding. But when it comes to inviting in outside folk who don't know, they're just looking to see the mountains and enjoy the beauty and have a good time with, you know, their asset, that, that's a slippery slope. And I'm really glad nobody's gotten hurt yet and there haven't been any 911 calls. I think that's wonderful. And yet, we are just in the foundation. So that is, I want everybody to consider the wind and the 107 mile per hour we had earlier this year and what that looked like and how many RVs were tipped over and damaged from that. I personally have had two horse trailers over the years get taken across the farm from the wind. And I know how to park and I know how to block my stuff and I know how to keep it hooked to my truck and things still happen. So thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
My name is Joe Carr, I live at 600 Willsey College Road. And I just wanted to emphasize what she was talking about. You know, the rise for Willsey College from our, our property goes up 100 feet. You just look up there and across that hill where the proposed RV park is, this, we've been here past couple of days, no storm, huge winds, huge winds. They hit our house and it makes it feel like it was thrown a hammer. When I think about 40 RVs not secured up at the top of that hill, that wind, gone. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else?
Can I speak again?
Hi, I'm Kathy Willsey Klimmer. No one knows this property any better than me, I was raised on this property. Liam knows it. I've done hay, cattle, tobacco, it was in my family. Now, the wind has always been around. Willsey College Road is in great shape right now compared to when I was there. And I have to think back, if my granddad and father was still alive, if we went in out there with those cattle trailers, hay balers and everything else, would we be jumped on? I'd say we would. I'd say the county would have to be called. That road, sir, if you can't get your combine up through there, that's your problem. It's just, I've driven trucks and trailers up through there. I shared the road, I've never had any problems. Our road's in really good shape now. The hairpin curbs, if you go up on one of them, you just can't drive. And it, the wind, it's going to be there. Wind has been everywhere. I'm sure if we're calling for heavy hard wind, storms, people camping, they'll realize it, go get out. That's what you have to do when you go on that side of the county. Now, I'll tell you what the danger of the road is, I feel out there. And you can't do anything about it because those big trucks, they pay their taxes, that 107 cutoff, that road there, when you leave the crossroads going toward the sand company, I bet that road is not any more wider than the Willsey College Road by much. That's what I fear for safety out there is the big dump trucks. Far more than where I was raised up there. That's just my opinion and I don't think it was a farm, it was a beautiful farm. It still tears me up, but it's gone. Mine, sold it, it's been chopped up a couple times since, in lots of, lots of different lots. It is what it is. People's come in now, we have to accept it. And that's just where I'm at with it. We have to accept it. But I bet you, if my family of generations did was up there, we would still be having these problems. Somebody wouldn't like suffering. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Sure.
My name's Alan Davis and I live at, on Willsey College. We just put a house there, okay? I can speak on the character of Jennifer and Glenn. I got a phone call when we retained here from Virginia after I retired. I got a phone call one night at our house, brand new house, shingles blew off, okay? I get a phone call from somebody I've never met, somebody I've never gone face to face with, they went out of their way to call me and tell me and my wife that we had shingles blow off our brand new one. Okay? He didn't have to do that, neither did Jennifer. Who does that? To me, people who do that, they're the honest people, they're the people who care. Okay? I hear a lot about safety, I drove over 30 years, okay, I was a garbage man. And I've been on narrow roads, I've been broken, New Hampshire all the way down to Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia, picking up trash. Because that's the job that requires, I've been on many, many, many roads that are a lot narrower than that and I've seen two garbage trucks passing down. Yeah, sometimes you've got to take your mirror and fold it in, attach another rock because it's the mirror and fenders of the white part of the vehicle. He knows that. Okay? So don't I. And I've seen these dump trucks go back and forth. And not one time have they been real close to each other. That's the best thing I can talk about because I feel, am fairly new to the area. But my house sits right in front of the RV park, there's no distractions, there's nothing there that I'd be concerned about. Now, if anybody wanted to get upset, I think it would be people who have bought the property on Willsey College that are putting a home there. And there's still people putting homes here from what I understand, they're coming. I'd like to say thank you and, you know, we've been welcomed to the area by a lot of people, very nice people. And them are the people I want to be surrounded by. And Gwen and Jennifer are top-notch people as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Anybody else? Just two interest issues.
Please don't play white ones.
As long as I'm saying that. Anybody else says, I forgot to follow this up, it's kind of like talking to your wife.
You want to say something?
Yeah, I'm Howard Jones, lived up there all my life. Two nicest people I ever met. I got four lambs, drones and marine bay out there. They got a dream, I had a dream. Don't you all have a dream to have something of your own? Well, God give us freedom, this world trying to take away from us. But I think they got the right to have what they have. And like I said, I'll be the back door bitch, big trucks. Drove up and down them roads, I ain't had no problem. Vehicles ain't so wide, I'm fit, I believe. Had, I were allowed to haul, I believe, maybe three, but anyhow, we ain't had no problem. These people were coming in here, it's been like this all my life, we ain't had no problem. But we're having a problem now, we know the reason why. And I rest my opinion.
Okay, the commission has heard 10 people speak, allowing that Roger had suggested seven, so we've allowed 10 to speak.
Seven each way, yeah, it's 14, 14.
Well, we've had.
I would just like to speak, I mean, I am the owner. My name is Jennifer Adamac, the owner of Presidential R B Ranch Resort. As far as wind, as Danielle is saying, wind is every single place in the world. You have hurricanes and tornadoes in Florida, that's the one good thing about RVs, we have wheels so we can leave. It's our first intention to tell our guests, hey, there's a storm coming, if you're not comfortable, you can leave. We're going to be closed for a few months during the worst of the season anyway, in the winter. So our guests' safety is our number one concern. And just like when we stayed at Davy Crockett and our awning was blown off, it happens every place, not just Camp Creek. So, you know, as far as weather, when you're in RV year and this is what you do in life, you follow the weather patterns. We've been plenty of places in, all across the country where we've had tornadoes behind us and we're running away from it. We've been chased out of our camp traps several times because of weather and it happens everywhere. Here at Camp Creek, we get between five and 15 times a year where the weather is bad and again, three of those months, we're going to be closed. So what? We deal with it. Safety is our number one concern. You can ask any one of our neighbors here and any one of our friends who would fill this room today about our, how we care about our people and our friends and our guests and they'll tell you, our safety is number one. And by the way, that's not an 80-foot cliff at all. So where she's getting her numbers, just like everything out of the mouth is a lie.
Whoa, whoa. Excuse me. No. That's a lie. That was from the road reports.
Hey, Amy, can I say something? I'm not on either side, I'm just a commissioner.
Just for the record, Brad Peters.
Brad Peters, big commissioner. As somebody who dealt with the landfill for years and also dealt with street issues, I understand the concern about large vehicles passing each other because we had it at the landfill with potential tractor trailer drivers, trucks having to pass on those same drugs, which I would guess is probably no wider than Willsey College Road. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting you do this or much less requiring you to do this, I'm just saying if the traffic is, becomes an issue, you could do like we did at the landfill and require all the trucks to go one way. Because at the landfill, you have to exit layup, go out to the test one side and come in on the green side.
And that's our goal.
So that's, yeah, and I know it's hard when people want to follow the GPS and, but you know, that's something you could consider if, if the, if the passing traffic does become an issue, there are, you do have methods that should get addressed that way.
You suggest, oh, there's a bike in one way, probably down to Willsey College.
No, no, I'm saying that the RVs have to come in one way. That's, that's the way old stage is signed.
Who's going to restrict that?
Sure, I mean, that's who restricts it at the, I mean, who restricts speed limits and other laws we have.
I'd just say that's a possibility.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's a possibility and it would be, if that's their goal anyway, they can let their guests know to come in from that way, that's the safest way.
So you'd have signage saying.
Like at the landfill, if you're coming in off Ball Road, I think it's still a name of it, you get to old stage, there's a sign that says, truck traffic must enter from greenwood side. And then when you're coming out of landfill, it says, truck traffic must enter land.
And they charge truck drivers if they don't allow it.
Yeah, they.
They just charge the truck driver a month for going wrong way.
But regular vehicles, you go the way, it's truck traffic, tell them one way.
Thank you.
I don't think I've ever seen a police car on Willsey College Road, ever.
Never seen one.
Ever seen a police car on Willsey College Road. Is this released anywhere?
We've got constantly to do that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got, we've got Amy on Zoom call here, she would like to speak. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Amy, I just want to clear the record on a couple of quick things. Number one, the road data that we've used throughout this conversation is based off the Greene County road report from 2002. So they are 2022, they are correct road length. And then number two, regardless of signage, it doesn't matter what signs are sent out or even if an email is sent out for potential campers, the campers will go the way the maps, the online map, Google Maps tells them to go. And so that is a bigger issue because nine times out of 10, whenever I've taken it from count or from, say, the 107 cutoff, it will always tell me to go the back way and not the way that they're proposing to send people through Camp Creek. and not the way that they're proposing to send people through Camp Creek. But that's all, and also please refer to Rodney Pioneer's paper, where he stated that he thinks there was potential 400 and something took over events for trailers in the last couple of years. He did a road, a wind study, that's included in your packet as well as the road report data with the road maps that I mentioned as well. Thank you so much.
And what she's speaking of is in your, is in the information that I provided to the planning commission, that was emails sent out, some yesterday and some today, there's a paper clip on it, from two or three, you see two others.
Anybody else?
As far as speakers are concerned, we have a total of ten, five in opposition, and five in four.
My name is Chase Miller, I live on Kelly Gap Road. In regards to the tandem dump trucks, those guys, they live here, they drive those roads all the time, they know where to look, they know the line curves. I have a Class A CDL, I have thousands of miles in my career, in my little, already, and those trail. You know, with COVID, the surge in RV trucks just went up the roof. A lot of these people, they don't drive these RVs a lot, they don't have a lot of experience driving these vehicles at these lengths, on these back roads, they're from out of state, from out of, not, they don't live here, they don't know how these roads are. They're gonna follow the GPS, whichever way the GPS takes them. And it's really just putting everybody that lives in the community, not just on Woolsey College, but they're joining roads that feed Woolsey College roads, it's putting them at major risk. There will be accidents, like, I'll put money on that. So, if you guys, I mean, I'm sure y'all are, I'm sure y'all are very nice people, but I want y'all to chase y'all's dreams, but not at the risk of my family's health or safety and of my neighbors in the community as well. That's, that, there's no tolerance in my mind for safety whatsoever. And, yeah, I mean, these people that are becoming here, they don't know, they don't know the winds. The winds, the winds do come, but hurricanes come with warning, these winds do not. No, they don't. We have winds that come out of nowhere and they go out of nowhere. They're not, you see the, you see the weather reports for Green County, we get winds in Green County, so there's no wind. It's, it's just rolling the dice, because they jumble. And I don't want my family to be a part of the shore end of the state on that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Kim. Now, I've got the drawings, and officiated one, farm information, or service, and we're down to the point now, whether the water county regulations, Jerry, if you want to use some of these, you should have this in package, so I'm not sure. If you've got any questions on one of your packets, as far as, Janet, you can look at that. But I'll go, I'm gonna go through our regulations, and tell you what the site plan, what they've submitted. Section 512, which is site plan requirements, the very first. Yeah.
There's just one in there that's site plan.
Your package, the only reason I lay those out is the fact that, in your package, if you've got question on what you can't see there, or you've got question, you can look for bigger one on there. This given at this.
Two major issues.
It shows one there. The actual very first, which this was brought before you back originally, has a preliminary, so they could proceed forward. There was a lot of ifs, that was still unknown. The septic caused some relocation of some of the sites on there, due to where the septic system is too required by TDEC, those areas. The very first on section 512 talks about the hook rectangle drawings, they did provide those, those are in the actual site plans. The second one was dealing with the, well, I'll just read this one, it's act at location dimensions of existing proposed structures, which that is, is on there. The driveways, that shows coming in off the roadways, there are existing on those. There's not necessarily loading issues, or landscaping. There was some issues with the landscaping when the plans were submitted, which didn't show the staggered part of the areas. That had been corrected on that as well, which shows it on page four, I guess section four of that as well. It also goes on through, I don't read each one of these, but it does, I mean, there's a lot here to read on it, but. As we go through sections, or C, it talks about the location dimensions of planned buildings, those are provided as well on there. Talks about the intervals of the contras, what's required on those, it's less than two, it's what majority has on it, two is what the requirement says. The drainage plan, calculations, they also show the drainage requirements. The erosion plan, which was required also, which is, they did have state permits, where they went through the state with this, and that has been submitted. The landscape requirements was extra that I'd requested them, it's also in our zoning, but the site sheets that actually has the requirements on it, that wasn't part of your, you all can look at this. This was actually going through the site plan requirements as far as their procedures with that. That will, I will add that to our information today. Which included the, if you look at the site plan, and it has been corrected on some of this, but the actual site plan had the, I couldn't read, the minimum requirements on it, even though they had them wrote in on the notes, couldn't make it out, and that's the reason requesting this statement from the engineer on it, to clarify. Get on down into detailed soil map, that soil map has been provided, given to the state, it's in TDEC's office right now with that. Then we're going in, that was actually site plan requirements, then we're going into campground requirements. Five acres is not an issue, that was acceptable. Site plan that was submitted to the planning commission, that's still to be determined what you do with this today. Buffering, this also goes in with the buffering requirements. The original shows a single set of trees on the certain areas of it, that has been corrected now, as far as what was originally submitted. The outer twenty-five foot, that goes into the staggered part of it, that it had to be at the buffer area, the minimum of six feet in height when planted. That's part of the requirements that will, and also states in the sheet going around, that they have the ten-foot on center, to help protect. The original, like I said, showed that the, had one section, only had one road, which is no way to achieve the staggered pattern on that. You also have the buffering info is in that sheet as well. That sheet right there has got a lot of information dealing with the buffering, and it lacks pretty much all of it, other than what's listed on the site plan. We don't have to deal with the alternative buffering, because there's not been something that's been submitted to, for approval. The access roads into the campground, it just requires that there be a four-inch gravel base on it. The, each site must have adequate parking, that was something that came up in one of the comments. The site area, or the camper, camp areas, RV areas are eighty-five feet in length. RVs roughly forty feet, at least forty feet for each end, or twenty feet on each end of that, that would be adequate for parking. They will show a detailed parking for that, that's something that would come out of our office, we would require them to do for the completion. The dust and the noise, if there is a noxious noise, becomes a nuisance, and that's part of the regulations, that if that happens, then they have to have a thousand-foot buffer, which most places can't acquire. As of right now, that's not been, we've got numerous campgrounds throughout the county, and so far, I don't recall any of them being an issue with that as far as the campgrounds. Sanitation, we allow quarter johns and so forth, or they can get approval from the groundwater division of TDEC, and that is, that soil work as I stated earlier is being submitted to state, and it's in the TDEC's hands now. Drinking water, the reason the safe drinking water requirements are in there, it's because some works off springs and wells, this is off of public water, so that's regulated through that. The other issues here is not thirty days end of it, can't have any permanent, so that's for residents, they only can be there thirty days, which we discussed in our previous meetings that we've had, then they have to be removed for seven days, so they can't set up residency, residency in the areas. There is more on this site, there's not more sites available, there's forty sites on the old, and there's also the same on this picker site plan. The only thing that I found that was different with this, that there was, showed two structures, cabin structures, these cannot have full, they're not treated the same as a residence, because they don't have full facilities in them, they don't have kitchens in them, they can only, just sleeping in areas and possibly bathroom, if that's chosen, put in, but they can't have the kitchen areas in them, full kitchen. So that separates them from the residents or dwelling. So they're not treated in the same on that. There is three more cabins on this picker drawing than what was there in the original presented under the preliminary, and I'll let Roger deal or talk a little bit more about that in a second, and some of the other issues he sees in with this, but they have went through this requirements, there's still some, as this goes on, some of this stuff doesn't require the planning commission's approval, it requires, if they come back and submit information, it would be submitted to the enforcing officer, which would be ours, and that would be, for instance, I'll give you the scenario, it's under campground requirements, C, it says information on brushing design and width, height, capacity growing period, maturity time, schedule, installation, responsibility, the maintenance shall be submitted for approval by the enforcing officer, so it's not something, you are getting some of this information before you, but that's something that would come through our office for approval, not necessarily the planning commission. You're getting a little more of this site plan than you normally do get with a lot of them, but if you got any questions, I'll answer that. Roger, you can touch on the cabins, and anything else you find that maybe we need to address with this. But this is our regulations, I, you know, we got a lot of discussion on a lot of different issues, but this is what we, the county commission, I said we, the county commission, put into place. And, you know, there's always a lot of times looking at the site plans, you may miss something, and those, we try our due diligence not to have that happen, but there is scenarios where it does happen. It doesn't mean the site plan's bad, site plan, it means that we will catch this further into it, and we will, we will correct it, as far as making sure that it does happen. It's the same way with building plans, there's always, we find this in construction documents all the time, but, you know, no one's infallible as far as saying we've not missed something, but we do try our diligence to try and make it to work, it complies with regulations. And I went through the regulations as I said here on it. So I'll leave it to Roger if he wants to, or y'all got questions, we'll try to answer them later.
Did y'all have any questions? I guess something I would say, we've heard a lot of discussion about wind, about roads. I understand the concerns about those issues, but the only problem is, is the county commission adopts zoning ordinance. Unless it's a zoning ordinance, the planning commission's hands are pretty well tied. I mean, if you agree or not, but we do have regulations, for instance, the most obvious is the sale of beer has to be on an arterial or collective road. But in this situation, commissioners who adopted the zoning ordinance and make amendments to the zoning ordinance, I'm assuming, that's maybe a bad term, that there was a desire to have campgrounds, or, excuse me, to allow campgrounds in rural areas of the county. I mean, we've got campgrounds on the top of the mountain. We've got campgrounds at Ballington, in my community, there's two campgrounds, and they're over a hundred sites, and are usually full. I mean, they're three or four miles from here. You know, and I hear issues about wind. But again, there's nothing in our regulations. And I guess something I caution the planning commission is to look at the ordinance itself, what's required of campers, and say that's what Tim has to do. Sometimes people get really confused, and they think, for instance, that Tim and myself can change the zoning ordinance if we don't think it's right, or we don't think it's fair, or we don't think it's safe. But that's not the law. The county commission, and of course, as you all know, you know, we're already in lawsuit over this campground as we speak, since it's already been filed. But at the end of the day, the planning commission's responsibility is, is to look at the zoning ordinance as approved by the county commission, and render a fair decision, you know, whether this property is owned by rich folks or poor folks, whether it's on the north side or the south side of the county. That's the requirement of the planning commission. The county commission approves the zoning ordinance, and you all interpret to try to make a sound decision. And I'll answer any questions that you all may have.
Can I ask a question? Do I have to ask about public safety?
No. I mean, honestly, that's, it's up to, it's up to the planning commission now. They get me done.
I was just wondering who was responsible for public safety? If the zoning ordinance is not. Just a question. Nobody?
I mean, honestly, I guess I can answer that question. If, for instance, you folks believe that RV parks need to be on a main thoroughfare, then you ask your county commissioners to modify the zoning ordinance. Now, here's the problem, and of course, I've been here a long time, the problem you have is, is I may not, I may want to change for this area, but I want to change county-wide. But the only thing that the county should do, I hope we do, I pray we do, is we should treat everybody equally and fairly. But the county commission isn't the one to make the determination, so for instance, if it's a desire, that, for instance, this gentleman talked about a combine, I farmed all my life. Most neighbors think is have an idiot drive at high speed, running up on the back of a tractor. But farming's an acceptable occupation, and we have a lot of people that farm. But guess what the end result is? You know how many times commissioners get cussed live, and you all sit at the speed limit of thirty-five on us now? Who's telling me how fast I need to drive?
I can see how this is wrong.
Please don't, I mean, we're trying to keep everything where one person talks at the time, because it's being recorded. But nobody likes to be told what to do. So we're telling people you can't drive fifty-five miles there on a county road, for safety reasons. But you folks have an absolute right, if you think things need to be changed, is to petition your county commissioner, because the only issues the county commissioners are dealing with is legislation to stay in the house of commissioners to enact. We don't decide how much time you get for DUI, but we can decide as long as we have for our county.
I have a, I don't know if I can contribute, no?
No, you can talk. Sorry.
So it's time for you folks to, you can ask any questions, you can ask any questions, y'all can make comments.
So what I'm hearing, this meets everything in the requirements, or?
They went through, they submitted. I've actually, I will print off a copy of the drawings. As.
I've, I've actually, I will print off a copy of the drawings as, for our, just for our office use markups as we go out to do things on it. But with all the paperwork that's been submitted, what I have requested, they have, now, again, even though it's been submitted, we have to make sure that this happens as it goes through. But I, I went through the zoning resolution, and I've, I've covered everything. You all heard exactly what, what our zoning resolution as far as the numbers on it. I didn't, the only thing I skipped in that particular area was dealing with the long-term, which I did cover that a little bit. But others, we can enter the campgrounds at any time to verify compliance, that's, that's the regulation. They don't have any, you know, they can't prevent us from doing so, even down to this. The only thing we don't have, and this would have to be subject to that, as far as, is TDEC's approval for, they submitted, they've done five of the permitting, they've got permitting information for the SWF, everything as far as been submitted with the. TDEC has the soil work they have worked on, we've talked to Eric Ball, which has been working on it. He just does not have that, and which that's the same with your subdivision flats, we always do subject to those, because that, TDEC's always holding out. They, everything has been laid out there, they show it, they've, they've got the permits with the injector pump and so forth. So they, they, this information's been there, it's just, that's out of our control with that, that's not something that we get, put a timeframe on it. It's not that it's not been designed, it's just for them to review and submit that.
The sheet that was passed around earlier.
It's still within the crowd or somewhere.
Is this the, the buffer?
Yeah, you showed the requirements on it.
You just pass it back now?
No, we'll have it in the records for the, well, that was a request. I'd actually, I wanted some clarity that I requested before I'm meeting today, because of some of the, I was not able to read some of the details, and I asked for some of the information to be presented for mine. And we'll have more, I mean, I will tell you, there's, there's clarity that you'll ask for, even with engineers, even on those, any of the drawings, I'll ask for information, and for the most part, they're pretty much, they're pretty good if I give it to us. But we're bound with the regulations that we have in place. There's not anything, I was concerned with the wind originally, still am, but that's not, that's not something we can, we just ask that one's used, you know, as much as possible we can with that. But if you've got questions with anything that's here, I'll be happy to try to answer. Again, we're not, I'm not saying we're infallible, we, we, there's a lot to look at on these, and it's very easy to miss something, but we've tried our best to, to go over it and try to get as close to meeting the requirements as we can. The only thing that was out, that was extra on this that I've seen, was they, they did shuffle the areas around for the septic system. And they also had the extra cabin sites on there that the board would have to recognize on that as far as allowing the.
How much work if you done on that?
Can't do anything until we get our septic permits. How much money have we spent? We can't talk about that.
We've spent over a million point five and haven't even broken ground.
Couldn't be over budget.
We have a $5 million budget.
So so far, everything that we've seen on this meets all the requirements of an RV park in Green County.
No, not, and we went over this together, with Roger as well. The only thing that was outside soil was just the extra cabins to put there. And they're, they're not, they cannot have a, the only way you can have an actual residence that's classified with full is if it meets the same requirements as you would just for a single family out on a lot. And that would be the highest paper per, but where they have no, not full living quarters, then they can put on classifieds the residence. Only if that's the, those extra threes really the areas that, that change something. We will have some more descriptions on the parking, which is on, maybe on this one here, I'm not sure. But there were, there is room for the parking in those areas, and like I said, there's 20 feet on each end of that. If they chose to leave it on those stages, because they're 85 feet in length on it, they could park on either end of that magnitude.
But it meets all requirements?
It does. From what I, what we've, we've looked at, we feel that we've done due diligence on trying to make sure it meets the requirements. And that's what the county is set for.
But it would be septic situated in the north?
It is septic too, this would be septic too, TDEC.
Will there still be the resolution from over six months on the court? Will that still be in effect regardless of how this thing goes?
Not for this one.
Not for this one.
And it's not been factored to the county commission, then I wish it doesn't go into effect into the county commission.
That comes up this month, don't we?
Next month.
Oh, it ain't on this one?
There was a 15, I thought, once.
Roger, do you, do you see anything that I've missed as far as going on?
I mean, obviously, yes, that's what I'm trying to say, if you go down the list. I guess I'd like to point out, it's Tim's obligation, just like doing a home inspection. It's his obligation to make sure these folks, in fact, cross the D's and dot the I's. And that's what I mean, that's, at the end of the day, you want to treat everyone the same. And this is, we're having a lot of issues now dealing with campgrounds. We really want to treat everybody the same, based on the regs.
It's, it's my opinion that, I mean, I may have an opinion one way or another, but that's my opinion, and it really doesn't matter what is said, because everything's been done accordingly. So that's where we are, and I think if it's, if it's us who have to decide if everything's been done accordingly, we can move on with it, whether we agree with it, or want it, or don't want it.
Our campground is something completely different. Wait, wait.
Me?
Okay. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, everybody has.
Everybody has time to make a decision?
I've got one thing to say. I had a friend of mine in Jonesboro, we on Sunday drive, and we went down through by this proposed site. Yeah, he said, I've seen something about RV park, he looked at me, well, I seen something on the tube back there. And he said, whoa. And we continued to drive, eventually come out on the actual highway, come in from, one of the cutoffs, I don't know, it was good. He, he, I guess, long story short, he, he was surprised that anybody want to invest to put a campground. Even every grandson, whenever it took out the old values. But that's everybody's choice, you're gonna spend $5 million, go do it, my, my county budget.
Good way to think of it.
If it met all the requirements, I'd move, are we actually approving the site plan, or do we?
We're pending final site plan approval, septic situated.
I move that we grant site plan approvals of the TDEC.
The most, a girl's second. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. If those who carries approved final site plan with the TDEC, approval.
Thank you, board.
Okay, read and consider approval, final site plan approval with TDEC, lodge.